It's 5:02 PM. We have a quorum present, so I will commence the meeting. And I want to thank Eric for joining us. Yeah, everybody's got the request that Eric sent out to me back on November 18th. And given that he's here, I'm going to skip right to item three on our agenda, which is the request by our selectman Eric Walden for an advisory opinion. You know, I'm just going to ask Eric if you can give us an update. I don't, you, you have not joined the Board of Directors at this point in time, as I understand, and are seeking our advice as to what you'll still be able to do as a selectman as regards to the Performing Arts Center.
Yeah, well, thanks for having me. I could just give you a little bit of context and background and see what questions you have. For anyone I haven't met, this is my second week as a member of the Board of Selectmen, having stepped down from being first selectman. And with extra time on my hands, I'm interested in joining the board of the Performing Arts Center. I have two interests in joining the board. One is just as a big fan of the Performing Arts Center, I'd like to be more engaged. But the other is a, is to, you know, better connect the Board of Selectmen to the Performing Arts Center and improve the communication and the conversation between our two boards, because there's, there's a lot of ways that we interact with them. If it sounds like it's, if I'm going to be in a position where I'd have to recuse myself for significant votes and frequently, because the Performing Arts Center does come to us frequently, my backup plan would be to basically be a liaison to the Performing Arts Center, where I wouldn't be on their board, but I'd just attend their meetings and be able to report back to the Board of Selectmen. So if that's where this group is headed with your advice, that's really okay. But I would still love the opportunity to join the board if it wasn't going to be too restrictive.
Okay.
Is it okay if I share with you sort of the four ways in which we tend to, we could run into potential conflicts of interest with the Performing Arts Center?
That would be fine. My understanding, and I directed everybody to the, hi, Len.
Hi, guys. Sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah, we're just getting started at this point in time. I directed everybody, I don't know if they had a chance to look at it. I, you know, noticed that the last Board of Selectmen agenda, there is a live item before the board at this point, before your board at this point in time regarding an EDA grant for, for the Performing Arts Center. In the amount, you know, applying for the amount of approximately $4 million, just a little bit over, which if approved, the EDA would pick up 80% of that and that the, you know, Performing Arts Center would pick up 10%, or about 400, 410,000. And the other 400, 410,000 would be the responsibility of the town, which is, I guess, something that would come directly before, before you, Eric.
Correct, yeah. So there's, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Tell us a little about that.
About this particular, the grant, or in general, how we interact with the Performing Arts Center?
I, I think you can do both.
Okay. Yeah, so, so there's some significant capital improvements that they're looking to make over there. And there's two grants that we're currently applying for as part of the federal rescue plan money. And that's sort of one bucket where they, they come to the Board of Selectmen looking for, for assistance, because many of these grants, the town has to actually be the applicant. Or we would have to put up, you know, some amount of matching funds, as you pointed out. Another area is around year-end transfers. So in the, in the, in the fall, there may be particular capital items that we can, we've invested in the past, such as the fence project around the outside of the PAC when we have leftover money at the end of the year. We don't provide the PAC any direct operating support, but we do provide, you know, capital improvements during our normal budget process, such as the paving of the parking lot, which is a project that's going to be happening next year. And then another very common area where we interact with them is around the public gathering permit process. So whenever, you know, whenever they have a significant event, we, we approve the public gathering permit for that.
Okay. Let me ask you, you know, I'll go to this, you know. At what point in time, and this is just a general question for them, at what point in time does, or what a dollar amount is it that, if there was a big improvement or a big project for the Performing Arts Center, it would be a separate item on our, you know, referendum, whether it's budget or special? You know, those, or would something like 410,000 be folded into the total town budget?
That would be folded into the town budget. I'm, I don't remember what the exact threshold is, but I think we're talking over a million dollars for it to be a standalone item on the referendum that people would vote on individually.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions as I move on? You know, this is not a question before us that doesn't have, you know, a precedent in the past. You know, I circulated to all the board members, there was an advisory opinion that the sport issued back in January of 2014, at the time, to another selectman, you know, Mike Payne. And, you know, regarding his service, you know, on the Board of Selectmen. And of course, at that point in time, he was also a vendor of the town. So he had, he had a more of a financial interest than you would ever, you know, you would ever have. I assume your service on the Board of the PAC would come without compensation, is that correct?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
I, Rick, I don't, I don't really see where there would be a conflict. In any case, the mere, the, the actually, the mere fact that we're talking about this makes it transparent and I think would mitigate any appearance of a conflict. I mean, if you were getting a salary for, for acting on the board, that would, might be another matter, I suppose. I wouldn't even want to prohibit you from recusing yourself as a member of Board of Selectmen. I don't really see a reason to do that. Does anybody ever have any other concerns about this? That's just my superficial observation here. I don't really see, once you've disclosed that you're on both boards and everybody knows about it, I don't see how you could really do anything that would be untoward.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't see that as anything untoward, I don't believe so. But, you know, I do, you know, the, you know, my opinion was that the optics might, you know, present some conflict with regard to, one, individual projects that come before the board, where you're sitting on both the board, where you're sitting on both boards, both financial and non-financial. And as far as the third question was concerned, does this preclude you from, you know, voting or, you know, participating in discussions and so forth on the overall town budget with regards to, you know, items that, you know, would be, you know, which may or may not include items from, you know, PAC? I don't think we would, you know, I don't believe you should preclude from doing those duties at all. And there is a, you know, we referenced it before and I relooked it up. There is an opinion from the State Board of Ethics going back to 1990 with regard to a, actually a legislator, one of the state representatives who also sat on the, I think it was on the Board of Directors of the Volvo, at that time, the Volvo Tennis Tournament. And, you know, regarding issues of, you know, state bonding for projects related to the Volvo Tennis Tournament. And the State Board of Ethics thought, you know, came to the conclusion that to preclude this particular legislature from voting on a bucket of bonding items, which included, but were not limited to that for the Volvo Tennis Tournament, that would be too much of a restrict, you know, restrictions on his duty as a state legislator. So, you know, in that regard, my opinion, you know, again, this is my personal opinion right now as a member, you know, as one member of this board. We, you know, with regard to the third question, you should not be precluded at all, would be your duty to involve yourself completely in the discussion of the town budget and any items on the, related to the PAC that are part of the town budget. I see that as separate, you know, I see that as separate from individual, you know, individual items that come before the board with regard to the, you know, the PAC. And I've probably the, from an ethics standpoint, probably the strictest interpretation I can come up with.
You know, it was, it's interesting taking a look at, you know, how we deal with it in the Ethics Code, because we talk about private services we, that are being rendered, the terms not defined anywhere. Is it, is it employment, is it pecuniary gain, does it extend to nonprofits? And so, you know, the code itself is, is less than helpful. Looked at the Volvo tennis opinion and it was interesting, because they were saying nonprofit should, you know, the legislature should take out nonprofit participation, but then the legislature really didn't do that. And kind of leaves us sort of up in the air. I think Mike Payne's ruling is, is very helpful for Preston there, even though it is, you know, a for-profit as opposed to a nonprofit entity. But I'm not sure we can necessarily distinguish between them under the, the way the, the code is. And disclosure is, of course, you know, part one. But if you disclose it and you have a conflict, that doesn't, there's a second part to it that, that needs to be considered. And for example, the proposal that is pending before the board now and undertaking some level of commitment. You know, it, it invites an ethics complaint by somebody who is, you know, who is anti-PAC, who wants the PAC to go back to raw land. It just invites that controversy, you know, in, in short order, I would expect. And, and would put the whole application under cloud. I think with an issue like that came up and Eric was on the board, then, you know, to avoid the appearance of impropriety, he would need to recuse himself, step down and, and I don't know if he can even participate in that discussion before the board without, you know, triggering some kind of, of reaction and, and bringing a matter to us. So there, there is some element of difficulty. The interesting thing about Mike's decision and the, and the Volvo decision before is they say, all right, if you have to recuse yourself for a particular matter for this, for improvements to the PAC, what about if those improvements are included in the overall budget? And can you, are you recused from the budget discussions? And, and said, you know, even if Payne's is a line item or two in the budget, that he can still decide and, and vote and participate in the overall budget discussion, just simply not anything particular to his interest? And the same would be here. I don't think it would disqualify Eric from participating in, you know, approval of the budget.
The, the, I'm sorry. The Payne decision is interesting on the issue of nonprofits, because it seems to take two different positions with respect to the McLean Refuge and the Chamber of Commerce. Granted, there's slightly different kinds of nonprofits. It's not clear to me, Eric, exactly how procedurally a kind of freestanding issue relating to the PAC would arise. That, let me, let me explain myself, you know, as, as Chip said, we have a precedent to the, or two precedents to the effect that you could vote on an overall budget resolution or a resolution that includes a PAC issue with some others. But what are the circumstances in which procedurally a PAC issue would arise alone?
Yeah, the most common scenario would be in October when we approve year-end transfers. So at the end of the year, you know, we've taxed people for a certain amount of money. There's money left over and then we can allocate that money to different projects. And more often than not, PAC projects are in the conversation. So as an example, when we did the fence that surrounds the PAC, that was a year-end transfer and that was a standalone item.
Just if I could make a couple of observations. One is, I'm not sure I had to see a distinction between a for-profit and a, and a profit venture, because Eric, I mean, you're, you're, you're looking to become a director, right? So you're, you're, you're a fiduciary for that organization and your obligation is to look out for its best interest, right? So, so that's one set of interests as opposed to your interest as a, as a, as a member of the Board of Selectmen. So I don't see, whether it's Mike Payne for Payne's or, or you as a director of a PAC, it's, it's, each of you is looking out for the interest of your organization as a, as a fiduciary. The one problem that, you know, and I, I agree that if it's just, if it's a general matter in the budget, seems to me that that's, you know, it's just not, that you should be able as a, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, be able to speak and act on that, on those matters. Where I do see, it's not an issue, but it's just, it's something you might want to consider, right? If, if you have to recuse yourself from discussions and voting on specific matters, it seems to me that that sort of defeats the purpose of you being a director on, at PAC, right? If, you know, just take the fence, for example. Let's assume, you know, PAC wanted the fence configured a certain way and you had all that information, right? And you said, look, I've been in the meetings and, you know, they want the fence here and not there. And now because you're, you're accused, are you prohibited from now communicating that information back to the Board of Selectmen, which ultimately defeats the purpose of your, you know, one of the purposes I see is you wanted to be a liaison between the board and PAC. So if all of a sudden you have all this information and now you can't disclose it or, or you must recuse yourself from those meetings, kind of defeats the purpose. But, so I don't know what you do with that, it's just, it's just an observation.
Yeah.
If I can, you know, if I can, you know, comment on that. Two things, first of all, with regards to Chip's comment, you know, whether our, you know, Code of Ethics deals with this specifically or not, you know, may not be specific, but, you know, I considered the, you know, any official employee consulted as a conflict or an interest when he, she engages or participates in any transaction or private employment or render services for, no official shall engage and, or accept private employment or render services for private, private interest when employment and services are in, because, you know, I, I would consider the broader interpretation that private services includes serving on the Board of Directors of an organization that, you know, isn't somehow connected to the town. So I think somehow we're covered. I'm not, that doesn't say that that disqualifies you from anything. With regards to Bob's just comment, you know, we, you know, in the opinion that we provided up to three months ago, we had the same, you know, it seems to me we had the same sort of issue. There was a, you know, specific expertise that, you know, the person we were discussing, you know, brought to the party. And we ended up, you know, we ended up deciding that, you know, he should be able to bring his expertise before the, you know, the, you know, commissions or so forth that was necessary without actually having, you know, a vote on a final decision on the, you know, hiring of a particular, you know, organization. It may be applicable here that, you know, if you've got an instance where there is a particular expertise that comes from, you know, comes from the PAC, you know, either, you know, one of two things could, you know, one of two things could happen. Either Eric could bring it before, you know, the Board of Selectmen, before recu, you know, before recusing himself when we decide that's the way to go. Or secondly, you know, there's another member of the Board of the PAC could come before the Board of Selectmen and make the same sort of, and make the same sort of presentation. You know, and participate in the, you know, participate in the discussion that way as opposed to Eric himself, who's in both roles.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm hesitant to do double duty if it's going to create, you know, certainly real conflicts or even, even the perception of a conflict, because a lot of my interest is just also improving the, the level of communication, which we could accomplish with a liaison role and there won't be any conflict. And just listening to the conversation, it sounds like there are, you know, I'd obviously be able to continue to vote on the town budget as a whole, but there may be items that have to be taken individually where I would need to recuse myself. You know, in the context of those special projects and, and I would just worry about my ability to, both the perception, if I participate in those conversations, but also my ability to be an advocate for both organizations, because I'm supposed to be an advocate for the town and advocate for the Performing Arts Center. And sometimes, sometimes those could come into conflict.
There, there is that problem of, of having some conflict and, and opens you up to the accusation that, you know, your participation as a board member tends to impair your judgment on behalf of the town. It's, it's, you know, and if it's a big dollar amount, you know, for instance, the, the roof going over the front of the PAC, you know, and in terms of communication, liaison role strikes me as, as more effective, because I don't know that you could participate on the board if there was a big matter up there. And similarly, you wouldn't want to be advocating in front of the board. I don't think you'd be allowed to lobby like that, so that someone else from the board would have to carry that water. You know, and, and your role on the, in the PAC would be primarily to work on PAC matters and stay out of town matters. So you're quasi-recused on the PAC side and you're quasi-recused on the, on the Board of Selectmen side.
Hey, acting as a liaison works for you, Chris. Excuse me, Eric. I apologize. If that works for you, I mean, that could be a way to thread the needle here.
Yeah, I think that'll make sense. I did want to, I appreciate you having this conversation, because I'm certainly not the last person to be in this situation. And, and I know we also have others who serve on, on other boards in town and also serve on the PAC board, so it's helpful to get some of that guidance. Appreciate it.
And I think under the Payne decision, you'd be able to, just as Mike was able to serve on McLean and just stay out, you, you could do that. The question is, you know, does that align with what you would like to contribute?
Yeah.
Which, which isn't for us to decide.
Yeah, no, fair enough. No, I appreciate you having the conversation, giving me this guidance.
You know, what I think is, you know, maybe to beat a dead horse, you know, sometimes, you know, we had this discussion three months ago, ethics sometimes is as much perception as it is, as it is reality. And, you know, I, I take to heart Chip's comment about somebody taking a look at something and coming up with some sort of complaint, even if in fact there is, you know, everything is completely on the up and up.
Yeah. I thought it would be a more, a more pleasant experience coming before you voluntarily than, than under duress, so.
We, we certainly appreciate that. It was, it's the absolute right way to, you know, it makes it better for all of us.
All right, everybody. Thank you for your time.
So at this point, you know, Eric, you know, you're going to, you know, we, we were just advised you would take, you're suggesting we advise that you take a liaison role.
Yeah. That makes a lot of sense to me. Thank you.
Do we need a motion?
Pardon, Gary, I had to miss what you said.
I missed that.
Do, do we need a motion?
I'm not, if, well, I mean, I'm not sure where we stand. If, if, if you'd like, Eric, we can, you know, come up with an opinion, I suppose, that is, you know, similar to Mike Payne's decision. Or if you want to go the liaison route and not be the PAC member, then there isn't any reason for us to, to write something up.
Yeah, I think if you, sorry, Gary.
Go along with that, no, I can go along with that too. We don't have to, then just make a motion to adjourn them.
If, if you all told me there was no conflict at all, I would, I would love to get something formalized there. But since we're taking this liaison approach, I'm fine with leaving it there.
Quickly, Bert, are you back in the meeting or not?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I got an email from Bert.
At the very beginning.
Yeah, okay.
So I understand that we don't need to produce a written opinion for which I think all of us think with the Board of Selectmen. And I, I think that means we can move on to the next agenda item.
All right, everybody. Have a good night.
Eric, I appreciate you coming before us and, you know, best of luck and, you know, as a liaison doing good for both.
All right, thanks. Take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay. The rest ought to be fairly easy, you know, move on to item four. Meeting dates for 2022. I have proposed again the, you know, the second Monday of the third month of each quarter. If that works for everybody, do we have a, any discussion?
Move to approve?
Second.
I'm sorry, who moved? Okay.
Chip. I seconded it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? That's it, that motion is approved unanimously. I hold business to approval of a special meeting minutes of September 14th. As you said, I distributed it to everybody earlier today. Hope everybody got a chance to read it. The only thing I did, Bert, from what you had is, you know, show me earlier is that because our meeting, you know, which is exactly why we're a special meeting now. because our meeting, you know, which is exactly why we're a special meeting now, is because our meeting was not held at the originally scheduled time of seven o'clock on the fourteenth, we have to be considered a special meeting. So I relabeled it from regular meeting to special meeting.
Thank you for that.
Any discussion on those meetings, minutes? Do I remember motion to approve? Gary seconded?
Second.
Lynn seconded, okay. All in favor? Okay, approves unanimously. And then special minute, meeting minutes of September twenty-first. Any discussion? Motion to approve?
Move.
Bob?
Second.
Second, Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
That's it. Very, very good. I think unless anybody else has got any comments, I think we are all set. I'll make sure that the, you know, I'll make sure that the, uh, meeting schedule gets to Trish Monroe, who's our new town clerk. And, you know, we do not have to have a special meeting next week. So, uh, do, our next meeting will again be March eighth. Whether it'll be in person or Zoom, all depends upon where we are and under the, I don't know what to call it, rules and order bylaws, whatever they are, you know, we will have election for, you know, it'll be two years, we'll have election for offices of this board in March. Anything else?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn? Pardon?
Before we adjourn, I want to let everyone know that I was sworn in to the Board of Finance last week and I, I plan to resign my position on this board. So I want to tell you that it's been, it's been a pleasure working with all of you. I wish our town was a little less ethical so I could have gotten to know you better. But in any event, thank you all. I hope to see you somewhere around town after today.
Bert, and thank you for your service as Vice President and Secretary for the past couple of years as well. And best of luck in your future endeavors on the Board of Finance and elsewhere.
Thank you.